The, the, the ordinance that's under consideration to, uh, that basically bans all multifamily housing options um in the city. Uh, there was, there was a bit of an issue with the um link to the public session. You had to, you had to go into either know to go directly to the YouTube site. Or um you had to follow some instructions uh in the uh in the agenda um that was there, but the direct link was not, was not working. So uh potentially there could be, you know, there was an issue with the public uh, public session. So I think our plan is going to be um this. First, um what we, a couple of us have talked about doing is having the planning commission and council get together and do some uh revisions on the uh on the ordinance as it is currently written. That uh probably the idea of banning multifamily housing in all of our zoning designations and across the board goes a little bit too far. So the big issue has been, and what led to the moratorium um really was the uh issue of high density student housing that was occurring in our commercial zones. Um, and I think uh Tom, Tom has uh, Tom has, Wincop has kind of put it this way is that, and our commercial zones are listed as non-residential zones. In our uh zoning ordinance there, and the, the way that this happens, um and the way that Tom has put it is that there's kind of an end around. Um, the developers can uh have, have used with the idea of um residential being a conditional use in those um commercial zoning designations uh, under the mixed use uh uh idea of mixed use. So what I wanted to have a discussion about this morning is, does this group have any input or ideas about how we might um refine the uh or revise that ordinance or that proposed ordinance? In any way, has anyone thought about that at all? Have any thoughts um on that matter that we would like to discuss? And maybe as a group that's in the implementation phase of Clemson next, we could uh make a recommendation or, or provide some thoughts to planning commission and council as they consider um some revisions to that or potential revisions to that proposed ordinance.
Well, Elaine did, did that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
I'm sorry, uh, well, I have a question. How does the, those historic neighborhoods, how are they affected by this? I mean, in terms of, are they considered those areas residential? We know there's some commercial there. I mean, if we revise the ordinance, how will those areas be exempted or within that um ordinance?
So, so right now, most of the historic neighborhoods are zoned in a residential zoning designation. And RM one, RM two, or you know, RM three, uh which does, does allow for some, you know, multifamily um housing. Um, so to do anything more dense than what is currently allowed there, um the, anyone who went in and tried to assemble property would have to come and ask for a zoning change for those areas or bring something forward as a planned development. Now, I do think that, you know, that, that might be, you know, another consideration that we could talk about is, is there a way that we um protect those historic um neighborhoods as well? But I think that's probably best done as a separate item and separate initiative to this. If that makes sense, because I think there's different needs there.
The other issue is some of those neighborhoods border zoning districts, don't they? That would allow this. So that's the threat too. It's not just within the boundaries of those zoning districts, it's the neighboring zoning districts, I think.
Yeah, and I think we need to consider, consider that as part of um, as we go through and we think about our commercial areas and our catalyst zones. Then that process will be across the board. Um, historic neighborhoods, any residential neighborhoods, how you um protect and soften the edge where higher density commercial uses meet um residential uses. So I think that, that would probably come in the specific potential other policy changes or in catalyst areas and overlays um as they're considered to say, here are the things that if higher density does occur here, that these are the requirements to ensure that there's some level of uh protection.
Um, I mean, you, you know, my, my gold standard in the long run, and I don't know whether that's an immediate or an eventual direction, is a separate zoning classification for high density student housing. And um, and, and that so that we can designate where we think that kind of housing is compatible. And what the, what, what constitutes that housing in terms of its mixed use or anything like that? Now Elaine, you had requested some information from me, and I don't know whether the Auburn information was, was useful. I had sent her some links to some things going on in Athens as well as Auburn. Um, and Auburn, and I didn't have a chance to dig into that completely, the Auburn stuff, but it looked like they were dealing with it as an overlay district, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
I haven't gone to where they are now. I think that was a 2016 article, so I haven't gotten to, I don't know if they took any action on that or not. The one that you sent me that, that looks the most promising is the Kennesaw, excuse me, the Kennesaw.
Kennesaw State, that's what it was, yeah.
But they're, uh, they, that is on the agenda for the June council meeting, so they haven't moved on it yet, but that's the first one. Um, and just doing a, a Google search for student housing zoning, I'm not coming up with much that way. That's, that's when I sent something to you, David, because I knew you had talked about it.
Well, and I, I was wondering whether we could approach the, the the administration in those communities to see if they have draft language even that we could build off of. So um, so uh, because they may have something that's not been adopted or published, but they've been working on it for a while now. And they, so they may be ahead of us.
What, what town is Kennesaw State in?
Kennesaw.
It's, it's Kennesaw.
Kennesaw, Georgia, it's right outside of Atlanta.
Yeah, it's north of Atlanta, off of I-75.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I knew, I knew that. I just wasn't sure if there was a town of Kennesaw or if it was like, you know, if it was, you know, near Roswell or something, you know, like that.
Guess it's near Marietta, isn't it?
Marietta, okay.
Yeah.
All right, um. So thoughts again there, you know, really, really the moratorium came down to, you know, our, our highest density that we have, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, outside of um commercial and what can be fit in through mixed use and conditional use is 56 beds an acre in RM four currently. So in our residential zones, um 50, about 56 beds an acre is what I've heard for RM four, is that right, Todd?
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
Those are beds too, not units, I think that's important to point out, yeah.
Yeah, 56 beds per acre um in an RM four zone is our highest residential use that we have in the city outside of the, um, like I said, I think, Tom, are you still on here?
No.
I heard, yeah, for some.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on, sorry about that. I'm muted.
You're, 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 you're showing up and Jackie, I'm sorry, this is very embarrassing, but today you're showing up as Jackie. So Jackie, we apologize um that your name's there and Tom, and Tom Wincop's voice is coming out of it. We know that's a horrible situation for you and ruining.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
That's, that's okay, he gets to be, he gets to be a, a, a queen today.
Well, like, well, still, I hope you'll, I hope you'll forgive us um for, for that. Um, yeah, as Tom, as Tom has called it, the, you know, a little bit of an end around that, that developers can use because of this idea of uh mixed use and the conditional use of residential in our non-residential zoning um category of commercial.
And, and, and you know, like I've said before, it's not the density, it's the typology. It's the, it's the density of students, right?
Right.
And, and so when we say beds and a developer designates a bedroom and puts two students in a bedroom, are we counting the bedroom or the beds?
I, I don't know that.
The answer to that is that uh, the, the formula we had and what Bob said is that the 56 beds per acre that um, that is based on um an occupancy of four. Uh, so you could have, um, you can have four people per bed, per bedroom, uh, which is like over campus view. They'd actually have rooms over there that have four people in a bed, bedroom, you know, they have two bunk beds in there. But the um, the, that, that formula is the 56 per beds per acre. And it is limited, but is, does have an occupancy of four per unit. And so that's based on, the 56 beds is based on pretty much one person per bed.
Okay.
But I mean, so my get, and here's my question. So someone submits plans for building with a four bedroom, four bath unit. And they, they're, they submit them with the, the designation that there's going to be one person per bedroom. And then they rent them up to two, I, I've never even known that there was four people in a bedroom in these units. So that, are they tricking the system is what I'm, 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 uh, I'm gaming the system. That's what I want to know.
That potential exists, uh, Dave, that um, one of the challenges we have is that our rental housing ordinance does not include any multifamily. So we are never inside any of these multifamily units unless been invited in by a resident. And, and or there's a complaint driven issue which we've, we've never, the only place we've had that issue is over University Ridge. Um, you know, right there overlooking Bowman Field, because that's a real mix of owner occupied and rentals. And so we have some people there who are living there, who are not students, and they're kind of bird dogging it. Every once in a while, they'll, they'll bring attention that they suspect there are too many students in the room and um, and we can go and check. But generally speaking, the way these are set up, uh, I'm sure there's some um bunking up going on. But um, uh, that there.
So, well, well, we know that some of the housing, the mul, the high density multifamily housing is putting more than one person in a bedroom.
I would think that is very rare.
It's pretty common to be actu, uh, the students, the feedback from the students is pretty common. So almost all of those are being used as multiple occupants in a bedroom. Um, and that I've heard, for the, I've heard that feedback. So in fact, when we say density, beds per unit, the developers are gaming that as, as uh.
Well, we have the ability.
Maybe it's someone.
We have the ability to shut that down. If, if, if you have, if you're aware of any circumstances where that exists, all we have to do is go there and uh, they're in violation. They, they're, they're, they're not allowed to. That part is complaint driven because we do not have the right to go uh invading other people's places with the judge isn't going to give us a warrant unless we have a reason. We do have what we call occupancy checks and that, which are a little more complicated for multifamily because we go by for 10 days and count cars. And if we start seeing cars that aren't adding up to the cloud occupancy, you can demonstrate uh evidence that, that, that it appears there are more people there supposed to. Then the judge will give us a warrant and we can go and investigate the situation. That has never occurred in the 10 years I've been here uh with multifamily. I'm not saying that there, this, it's not, that they're not places where you got more, more than uh two kids in a bedroom, but it's difficult to uh, to police mainly because you have these common parking lots. It's a lot easier, most of those occupancy complaints come about with a uh, single family home, you know, a rental home, because it's more telltale. But anyway, I, I.
So then, so the question is, can we, can we write the ordinance to enforce that at the, at the permitting process? Because, I mean, you know, some of these are, I don't know whether they're sublets or whether they're, they're, you know, formal lease agreements with the, the property management company, you know, you know, that, 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 you know, makes it you know, illegal to, to put more occupants in a bedroom than do that. But I mean, again, if we're, if we're limited to enforcing, it's kind of like having a slingshot to, to, to defend against an invading army, right? So, I mean, because enforcement is never going to be able to keep up with that, with the numbers we're talking about.
You have, David, they're in the ordinance now, that's what it says when they are approved and they are permitted and they are approved that um, no different than can you serve alcohol or can, how many people, what your occupancy is for a bar? That um, that all those are spelled out and they know what the rules are. But you're right, enforcement is always, you know, the challenge. Uh, I, I, again, from a perspective of it being an issue that most, most property owners of a multifamily do not want that, and they are paying attention because they're losing money. If all of a sudden they've got people staying there not paying rent, then uh, then they, they're highly motivated to self-police on that. And so, a, and also then most places are the, that there's, the parking is one per bedroom and they have some extra parking. So if there was a lot of that, there would be, people couldn't bring their cars there because there's not part, enough parking in most cases for, for a lot of that doubling up to occur. Anyway, I, I, I hear you and I, I, I think it's worth exploring ways to um strengthen the language in the ordinance. But uh, I think you nailed it, David, it's going to come down to enforcement and um usually when, when this has come up, that uh, we notify the uh, the property owner or property manager of a multifamily and they are PO'd and they, they take, they take charge of it, kick the kids out. Um, but that, I said, that's, that has rarely happened with us.
Okay, so, so that's, that's, that's another issue to, to think about. Um, I know that's come up on occasion. Why is the, why is the playing field not level? That people that are renting single family homes are subject to inspections and those kind of things and multifamily, multifamily properties are not. Um, I think, uh, yeah, so there's some thinking to be done there on the, on the occupancy rate. And if we, if we find that that's an issue, we need to make sure that not only can we enforce it, but the enforcement has teeth um as well. On that side, what about, let's, let's talk about the, the, the big issue. And I, I like how David put that with, it's not just, you know, um, student housing, but it's the form um as well. Do we have any thoughts as far as an acceptable density to, to go forward? Do we have thoughts about, you know, we're, we're, we're thinking about overlay districts that would, would potentially require anything? You know, to come forward as a, as a planned development? You know, based on what the plan and what we determine is the appropriate uh structure, form, you know, goals, vision for beginning with catalyst areas? Any, any thoughts there? I mean, want to, go ahead, Fran.
Well, I think, I think maybe it's worth visiting why we had the moratorium in the first place, and it might help answer that a little bit. Um, so my understanding was the concern was um, housing that had lots of people in a small area that didn't really fit with the integrity of the neighborhood and adjoining neighborhoods that added lots of traffic and noise to those areas. Um, and was a burden in terms of, of the whole city having to sort of support that. So that doesn't mean necessarily student housing, although that's, that's what it became, right? Um, so I think when the moratorium was put in place and then the ordinance we have right now, the intent was to look at ways to, to have that kind of housing in appropriate places, if anywhere. Um, and preserve the neighborhoods we have right now that were, like David said, this on the fringes of that kind of housing and sometimes right in the middle of it. And I think what we need to think about, Monday, I guess we'll have this council meeting is, how can we achieve that, which was the original goal? Um, without completely closing up the whole city? Um, so I think whatever the answer to that is, is the kind of thing that needs to move forward, but I don't know what the answer to that is. So just, just to help, I think it, it's worth going back to why we had the moratorium and what the concerns that we heard at council and everybody heard. What brought the moratorium about and how do we address that?
So, so to piggyback on that and to maybe bridge David's comments and, and yours is that I think, you know, a, a better way to put the concern is that if we allow the same, for development to occur in the same ways that we have, we're at a probably significant risk of all of our commercial, particularly our commercial corridors becoming monolithic student housing with empty retail on the ground floor. Um, and that does not make for a healthy city in, in any way whatsoever. That, that's the hot, you know, again, that's the highest value um type of development, and that's what property owners and developers are going to go for. We're going to have a, we're, we're at risk of having a very one dimensional, one dimensional town. And that isn't healthy. So how do we um begin to, not begin to, because we've already begun to, to think through that. But then, a, as Fran said, how do we figure out, what have David said? Are there areas where this is appropriate and can occur? We've got catalyst areas to begin to, to consider. How those catalyst areas with redevelopment may affect adjoining residential neighborhoods? How the catalyst areas can help us um begin to uh, consider again, more healthy transit oriented, um pedestrian friendly uh types of urban development uh to occur so that some of those issues that Fran was talking about with traffic and others are, are mitigated to the extent possible. So with that, Elaine, looked like you unmuted.
I, I did, I, I wanted to kind of go back to this ordinance um with the ban, the term ban, which, which doesn't sound real good. And, and think about this, so if we have, we, right now, we have some of the RM districts in that ordinance. So what if we don't put them in there? What I was just looking up is the height limit is 35 feet and we've got a bed limit of 56 per acre. So we've got some sort of limitations on that, and it's really the ones in the non-residential districts that are, are concerned right now because they're doing exactly what you're talking about, about how, higher, higher buildings with empty retail on the bottom. So what if we leave that one as, hold up on doing anything in the non-residential, any residential approval in the non-residential districts? And we use this, the RM one, two, three, 3.5 and four, such that with our historic neighborhoods, the only thing you could put adjacent to them would be RM four. So we use something like a step down zoning, which would protect them. So if they're RM one, two, or I don't think, I think there are some that are, I think they're mostly RM two and RM three.
Yeah, but, but at that point, we potentially are, are cha, are significantly changing from commercial uses that might have, you know, they're commercial, commercially zoned in many cases. So that we're, we are down zoning there from commercial or CM or CP to a residential use where potentially, uh, you know, one of my thoughts was, what if we take residential, the residential uh conditional use and place a limit, a, a density limit for residential in that conditional use um of some type at some level to, as, as a starting point that says that beyond this, uh, you know, we are interested in catalyst zones and anything has to come forward as a planned development that, that is outside of this straight zoning of, and my thought was, all right, our highest density right now is 56 beds an acre. To, you know, at, per right, you know, in a commercial zone, if you wanted to put 56 beds an acre, um, you could, you could, you could do that. If anything, anything above that would have to come forward as a PD.
But you couldn't do it without rezoning it, if it's zone commercial or commercial mixed, you couldn't do the RM four in that without rezoning it. I'm, excuse me, I'm just trying to think of where, how we take care of this big ban that's got everybody all kind of ruffled a little bit intermittently.
I'm saying just change the conditional use standard for residential to a limit of 56 beds an acre.
Well. Well, again, I mean, it's, it's, it, if, if you simply stick with density, then you really don't prohibit student housing. I mean, so you have to somehow get to specifying type, okay? So, you know, if you don't, if you simply say density, then you still have the propensity of, of getting a four bedroom, four bath exclusively dormitory designed housing project that as, as we've heard, can now be, exceed the density formally or informally through sublets or whatever. Uh, then, and we have no way of enforcing it. Uh, so, so I think we have to get to the point ultimately, where either through an overlay or through a zoning classification that we distinguish multifamily or high density purpose built student housing projects from, from all other residential classifications. Uh, because, I mean, we may not, why would we want to prevent uh reasonably priced workforce housing in some of these areas that may in fact be higher density? But uh, you, you, you see what I'm saying? So I, I mean, so until we get to type.
Right. Now, then we're not really addressing the problem. Having, having overlays, and again, so at, you know, current rates, 56 beds an acre is probably somewhere in the, uh, gets you to a point at the, the idea of developers being willing to pay $15,000 per bed, but I think at a lower density, they wouldn't be willing to pay that. But even if they were at that kind of maximum sweet spot level right now for high density stuff, that's $850,000 an acre that they could pay to get those 56 beds. And I'm not sure the numbers start, you know, are working at that point where we're still allowing, but you know, they're going to have to be really thoughtful about, about those projects. And that through the overlays that we create, uh, starting with catalyst areas, that we do open the possibility for form, type and, and all those other, other considerations that we, that we need to be thinking about. And our, our overlays give us a good starting point to think about and then expand where we do other, other overlays to allow for um our other, other goals uh there. Where we might have another, we can create, we could create a purpose built student housing designation and say, this overlay is purpose built, built student housing. If you meet these requirements, you can come in and, and do this here at, you know, density type, whatever. Uh, this other overlay, we want this to be truly mixed use. And truly mixed use means not just retail and, and residential, but retail, residential, public civic uses, uh, office professional, um, you know, a truly, a truly true mix of uh, of uses and not really what becomes a monolithic use in our current zoning um requirements.
Another. Another advantage of clearly distinguishing stu- purpose built student housing in some kind of codifying it some form or way is then we can attach impact fees proportional to the impact of those things that would could be set to allow us to actually have an enforcement mechanism that we could hire staff to routinely inspect these these projects and and do it. So, you know, that's the other advantage of distinguishing this type of housing because you know, it's, it's, it's just like, you know, so, I mean, otherwise, we're distributing the impact fees universally across everybody irrespective of the impact it's having on the community. Okay? And and we'd be discouraging the kind of housing we want, which is moderately priced workforce housing, right? So until we distinguish those types, I I think we're we're whacking a mole, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I I I get that. But I think we also have to, we have to get to a level of of realistic expectation on the workforce housing and affordable housing in Clemson, starting with, we need to protect what we have because there's not a ton of opportunity for redevelopment to occur within our seven and a half square mile city limits at the moment. I I agree with you a hundred percent, and I think there there might be some questions about with impact fees. It seems to me, I can't remember if you can have differential impact fees in South Carolina, or if they have to be universally applied to all types of development. Something about, you know, that is is in the back of my mind that you can't, you can't do that. Now, it makes no sense if they have to be universal because two hundred beds equals two hundred toilets equals two hundred, you know, sinks per acre is putting a significantly different strain on on the system than, yeah, then something else. So that's something that we need to look at and and that's one million needs to, you know, a million percent be on our radar either way. So, hey, Brad has his hand up and then I see that it is set up where we can do an executive session now, and I do want to get to that today. So let's hear from Brad and then I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I'm sorry, Bob, I see Thomas has his hand up. I had my hand up earlier. Are you seeing those hands up?
Uh, no, I didn't see yours, Jackie, but Jackie, go ahead. We'll let you jump Brad there since you had yours up.
No, no, Brad, go ahead. I just wanted to know if you saw people's hands up because Thomas has his hands up right now.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Just a quick comment on impact fees. The planning commission, I think in late twenty nineteen pursued that. It was a joint effort between Elaine and I. We did a lot of research on it. I think now Elaine or Todd, you may can help me out, but there was a lawsuit in York County and the state ruled that you can't have a broad spectrum impact fee. Is that correct? Todd, Elaine, can you help me out? Remember?
Yes, that's my recollection. And it was the last I've heard that that was a ruling. And I think that it was, it had gone under for appeal as they always do, and I don't know the outcome of that. But but that was the, and that would, but that was consistent with other case law that that most like transit related impact fees have got to be, there has to be a nexus between the the fees and where and how they're used.
Yeah, yeah. So we were looking to do a infrastructure impact fee for roads or sidewalks or something like that from the planning commission. It had a lot of support, lot of discussion, but when the pandemic hit, it's been backburned. So that's something that I would like for Elaine and I to kind of bring back to the commission at some point.
But are we talking about the difference between impact fees and the fees that they're charging in Charleston right now where they're requiring them to put, see those, I think those are two different things.
Those are, those are different things. Impact fees can go to like water sewer infrastructure, fire, fire, public safety, parks and rec. There's a, there's a variety of different categories that you can put impact fees into. And as Brad was just saying, I remember that now that there there is a when you're talking about road infrastructure, transit and those kind of things, there's some specific requirements there, you know, like so you can't charge, we couldn't charge impact fees on high density housing in one area and then use those impact fees to do something across town. They've got to be used for what what they are, you know, indicated for. And there's a big study that you have to go through on the front end in justifying what your impact fees are. Also, I I spoke too soon, the more button came up on the on the side where typically I could go to do breakout groups, but it doesn't have the breakout group.
Oh, I got a plan for you.
Okay.
The plan is we're going to have everybody, all the panelists, put their microphone on mute.
Okay.
Then I'm going to have you call into a conference, a conference call.
Okay.
And the number is six two four eleven twenty three.
Six two four eleven twenty three.
And the pin number is eleven twenty three pound.
All right. So here's what we need to do. I would like for I need a motion that we move into executive session to discuss a recommendation for to counsel for a project manager.
I will make that motion, but do we want to hear what Jackie had to say before we go?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Jackie.
What was the pin again?
Eleven one one two three pound.
One, two, three, okay.
Were you going to say something before Brad?
Yes, real, real quick. We keep coming back to the ordinance and I my question is, we have the white paper, we have the comprehensive plan. Aren't those guidelines to help us make a decision on the ordinance? I mean, we're dropping things here, dropping things there. Wasn't these things established to help guide our decision? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, I I believe so, but we also have the the immediate, a more immediate issue that, you know, the moratorium has expired. We have a pending ordinance that would in effect, do what the moratorium did and and more than what the moratorium did. So if that, you know, we we need to at least have something on the table to consider with this ordinance. And so I'm asking this group if we have some thoughts to, you know, officially put into that conversation with the planning commission and city council as they consider revisions to the ordinance for final consideration that again would put us in a situation where the original, you know, big concern was about high density student housing in the city. If we don't do something, then it's opened back up to where development can continue to occur as it has occurred in the past where those things would be possible. So that's why, that's why we're having this conversation today is to talk about, do we have a recommendation for that ordinance, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I get that. My thing is, since we have to make a decision in the short term, wouldn't, since the white paper's already been established, wouldn't that help us make a decision in the short term again?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think the white paper does say, you know, it doesn't say no student housing, but it says you need to be thought, more thoughtful and have a better development process as those things occur for student housing and other types of development to happen in the future. So, yeah, that that is a recommendation in the white paper that a a new development process be established that puts the city in a position to be in a better position to get the types of development that we want to occur.
So with the information that's in the comprehensive plan, because it's very detailed with the research and the recommendations of the white paper and the overlays, I think we're closer to having a solution than, you know, I, because we're, it seems like we're talking around, talking around the city and we have these tools in place that can help us narrow and focus and come up with a plan in the short term with the overlays from the white paper and the and the research done in the comprehensive plan that should give us an an opportunity to come in with a solution in the short term.
Right. And and that's what I think that's where we are, a solution, part of the solution in the short term is that we've got this one thing that can occur. Okay, that's got to, that we've got to figure out how to address, and that is the mixed use conditional, a conditional use under mixed use that residential can go in our commercial zones. So that's, that is a, that is a key factor that that needs a short term, a solution in the short term so that then we can create the overlays, create the new development process, create the new rules of engagement that get at that that allow those other things to happen. If not, we're at like status quo pre twenty, when did the moratorium go into effect? Pre twenty twenty with the way and how development can occur. So there's this one key thing that we're, and that's what we're talking about now that either needs to happen, or we need to live with the fact that we are back to the status quo of how development has been occurring. And that is the the biggest target and and issue is the ability to have high density student housing in our commercial zones under our current zoning ordinance. And it's not that we want to stop that, but we want to pump the, you know, pump the brakes and have those projects come forward in the areas that are designated and under the, under the rules of engage, new rules of engagement that that allow for that to occur in a better, healthier, transit oriented way that minimizes impacts on existing residential neighborhoods and maximizes the benefits to the to the city.
Okay, last, last, last thing, and we can move over to the breakout. Wouldn't our housing subcommittee? I know they're working on it. Wouldn't they be have be in a better position to have a short term solution recommendation that they're working on?
That housing subcommittee is actually is is workforce and non student housing. Now, that I hope now it's not going to be inexpensive, but I would hope, yes, that in our commercial zones and in the future that there are, there's a variety of housing types in in some areas that are available. But no, this is more of the high level land use zoning that we all are, you know, all hands on deck on that subcommittee. Because it's the the height, specifically the high density student focused housing that was the, you know, major issue that led to the original moratorium.
All right. Thank you. Sorry for all.
No, no, no problem, no problem. Those were all great questions.
Okay.
Um, all right.
I make, I make the motion that we go to executive session and discuss the personnel matter.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All right, if anyone is opposed, please indicate your opposition. Okay, hearing none, we will move to executive session. So remember, mute your microphones on the computer or phone that you're on currently. And then call into that number six two four eleven twenty three and the PIN is eleven twenty three pound. All right, so we'll see and hear you on there in a minute.
Jackie Meyer?
Has left the conference.
Ken Robinson.
Has left the conference.
Bob?
Has left.
All right, I think the, the background issue is there. All right, um, so we've come out of executive session. Or is there any motions based on the executive session?
Bob, could you repeat the uh motion and then I will go from there?
Okay, so uh, the motion uh was that uh on Monday night at council, when I make, when I make my report that uh we will recommend to council that Andy be allowed to move forward with entering into a contract with Shannon Quattlebaum to act as the project manager for the initial implementation of Clemson X process.
I will make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. Um, if you are opposed to that motion, please indicate saying. All right, hearing none, that passes. So on Monday night, uh, I will make that recommendation to council. So back to, back, real quick, back to our discussion. I know we're at nine oh six. What I'd like to do, because um I know these meetings have been going long, uh, let's put, put a little bit of thought into that or put a lot of thought into that for, for next week. Again, and we'll start there and we will get to the uh catalyst areas based on that because if, you know, again, council, planning commission, if something doesn't happen, you know, we can have catalyst areas all day long, but it is not going to you know, potentially you're going to have developers, property owners and others attempting to do projects under straight zoning in commercial areas outside of those catalyst areas. So this, this has a lot to do with our thought process as we, as we move forward. Both from, again, planning commission perspective, council perspective and, and our perspective. So again, the, the issue is we currently under mixed use in commercial zones, the uh, there is a end around um currently that, that conditional use of residential and a non-residential area um can occur. All right, Jackie, you were about to say something. I think Elaine has her he, hands up, hand up as well.
Was there a, uh, when is the um moratorium lifted?
The, the moratorium has been lifted. The way that things are, the reason that nothing is occurring now is because there's something called pending ordinance doc doctrine, okay, or, or the pending ordinance rule. So because council is considering an ordinance that would ban multifamily, it's under pending ordinance right now that no multifamily projects can come forward. But at, at a certain point in the near future, we've got to take action or not take action on that ordinance. And if we don't take action on that ordinance, we're back to status quo, pre-moratorium, rules of engagement for development.
How near future are we talking? One month, two weeks, ten days?
Uh, it, 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 it kind of depends um on the process. I'd say we're, we're we're probably with needing to revise this and have a uh a public hearing again on the revision and to make sure that the public hearing occurs in a way where we're absolutely certain that uh people could access that public hearing is important. So I would say we've probably got a, a, at least a month and a half. Uh, but that consideration, you know, with planning commission and city council, I think we're going to schedule a joint session in the very near future to have that discussion. So if we want to make any recommendations to insert into that, that conversation, we need to do that, you know, soon. All right, does that answer your question, Jackie?
Thank you.
Okay.
And my question is the, the pending ordinance that's in the white paper, which has been the one there for a while versus the one that planning commission? Is that the one we're talking about, the one that planning commission voted on at our last meeting, that special meeting that we had, that, is that what we're under now?
Yeah, that's what we're under now. The, it back in, back in like November, December, I think it was November, council passed a resolution to consider the ordinance that bans all multifamily. Okay, so that's what we're under now with the, that's what's got us under pending ordinance and that you all voted on that, what, a, a couple of meetings ago?
Yeah, it was a special call meeting last week.
Yeah, and then we uh, we had the, the, the public hearing last week as well. But we probably, based on, you know, some things we heard in the public meeting, based on some things in the white paper, based on what we're discussing, we probably need to make some revisions to that because the total band band goes a little bit too far and over addresses what the original concern was, so that we need to get to that process and go from there. Fran? Mute, unmute.
I think it's probably time, right, to get the land use working group together, not just us, but there were other people on the land use working group. Because I guess Todd, we have to start galloping uh as opposed to just jogging at this point, but I don't know how we transition with that group is, is, is ready to go. And I think we're, we're at that point to get that together with us and really start hammering this kind of issues we got today um as a group too.
So let, let's, let's do that. So for next Wednesday morning's meeting, let's invite the, the other folks. I will, we will do something to get them a little bit up to speed and that will give us a, a little bit more input on this idea of the multifamily ban. And then as we begin to go into, what are the important things that we want to, want overlays and catalyst areas and, and other, you know, tools that we have available to us to address moving forward to have development help us become the type of city that we want to be. Does that sound okay? To everybody? Any opposition to that? All right. So Andy, if you could, if you could stay on for a minute, um, or actually I'll just call you um to get a plan together to, to reach out to that, uh, those folks on that list um and invite them for next week and uh we'll go from there. Any, anything else before we go? I know it still feels like we're spinning our wheels, but I really, I really think that we're closer to getting, getting moving than it feels like we are at the moment. Um, and uh, again, I know that we, we keep talking about it, but this ordinance is a, is a key component for moving forward and how we move forward. Um, so that's why, you know, we're coming back to this. And I think council and planning commission, you know, I think this group is a good group to, to provide a little bit of input when we get that uh session scheduled in the relatively near future to revise this ordinance. Again, it's a, it's a key piece that's going to have a major impact on what we do, why we do it and how we do it um moving forward. Okay? All right, thank you all. Let me know if you need anything in the meantime. Andy, I'll call you in a couple of minutes and uh have a good uh rest of your day and uh rest of your week. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Bye.
Bye.